I'd like to call the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting minute for Thursday, July 15, 2021, to order. Village Clerk Haley, will you please call the roll?
President Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Gallagos.
Here.
Trustee Marsh Oska.
Here.
Trustee Hannan.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Molina.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Haley. And Trustee Pollak is not with us this evening.
Stand for the Pledge of Regents.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it looks like I already took things out of order. It's my fourth meeting, I'm getting used to this. President's report. It is my honor tonight to make a motion to appoint Kimber Coombs and Bridget Juuster to the Landscape Advisory Commission, term to expire 2024, and Kapil Kahana to the Preservation Commission, term to expire 2024. If I can have a motion in a second, please.
Motion made.
Trustee Gallagos, second.
Second.
Clerk Haley, please call the roll.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Oska.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion passes. Would you please swear in Ms. Coombs and Ms. Juuster? And thank you very much for volunteering, we appreciate it.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me, and I'll just have you state your names individually. So, I, Kimber Coombs.
I, Kimber Coombs.
I, Bridget Juuster.
I, Bridget Juuster.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully perform the duty.
And I will faithfully perform the duty.
Of the Office of Landscape Advisory Commissioner.
Of the Office of Landscape Advisory Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you, congratulations. If you could go sign for me. Which one is, is this mine? No, that's Bridget's.
Bridget said it's yours.
Here, sorry.
Do you want me to sign here?
You can sit right there.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Kimber. Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you.
We look forward to your input on that very important commission. Second is I'd like to make a motion, or I'd like to motion to reappoint Gina Fury to the Historical Commission.
I'll make a motion.
Term to expire, that's okay. Term to expire 2024. I'm gonna read them all. Charlie Piple to the Preservation Commission, term to expire 2024. Joel Marhul to the Planning and Zoning Commission, term to expire 2026. Thomas Walsh to the Preservation Commission, term to expire 2024. Suzanne Cale to the Economic Development Commission, term to expire 2024. Matthew Seymour to the Preservation Commission, term to expire 2024. Colleen Incandella to the Park and Recs Board, term to expire 2026. Colin Hughes to the Riverside TV Commission, term to expire 2024. John Matthews to the Planning and Zoning Commission, term to expire 2026. And Eric Sunstrom to Riverside TV Commission, term to expire 2024. If I can have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Trustee Evans, in a second?
I'll wait a second.
Thank you. Clerk Haley, please call the roll.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Oska.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Glad we don't have all eight of them standing up in front to try to do that together, so thank you. I would like to thank the new commissioners and those that are being reappointed for agreeing to serve on the commissions. It is important work that they do on behalf of that village, and many of the decisions we made, we make, are done with the work that they do, so I appreciate it. Third thing on my, last, an ordinance authorizing issuance of a Class E restaurant liquor license to Connolly and Desai Incorporated, DBA, The Sand Trap Grill and Tap. This is into the Old Malles location. Can I have a motion in a second?
Motion made.
Trustee Gallagos, in a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Evans. Clerk Haley, please call the roll.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Oska.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. I would like to ask Dan Tab, if you wouldn't mind. Over the past couple of meetings, we've talked about the Swan Pond, and we gave the village staff a direction of managed natural, and that's about all we gave them. But Dan and the forester and some outside consultants have done a great job fulfilling our initiative, and I just, for the, for the audience, I'd like them to give us a brief update.
We're going to summarize kind of what we've done to this point. Over the past couple of board meetings, discussions were held on whether or not Swan Pond should be mowed. At the May 20 meeting, the board provided a direction to discontinue the mowing of Swan Pond, to redirect efforts to manage dandelions and allow Swan Pond to go natural. During the June 17 meeting, members of the board clarified that the intention was to have a managed natural as opposed to wild natural. Under this direction, staff has put together a management plan to keep with the board's desire for a managed natural restoration. As part of the plan, staff has engaged with restoration ecologists from integrated lakes management to do spot treatments of invasive species using EPA-approved herbicide for use in flood plains and aquatic areas. This treatment would occur twice per year, a lighter treatment in spring and a heavier treatment in the fall. In addition to the fall treatment, if conditions and staff schedules allow, a prescribed burn would be conducted in Swan Pond. Prescribed burning favors native species and improves their competitive advantage among invasive species. No action will be taken over the winter months, but during this early spring, a refresh mow would be conducted to cut down everything that had grown the previous year. And approximately June, the spot treatment would be applied. During the duration of the growing season, paths would be mowed throughout Swan Pond to allow people to walk through and utilize the area. The aforementioned plan would be in conjunction with the currently managed intentionally planted area located in the swale that already receives three to four treatments annually. Staff will monitor Swan Pond over the course of the next year and report back to the board on how the site is responding. Any questions?
From a budget standpoint, just so everyone understands, the treatments are $2,200 for the total, 22 or 24?
The combination of the spring and the fall would be $2,400.
Right. And estimated to mow that area is 30?
3,000 to 3,400.
So from a budget standpoint, we're in the positive.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
Minor.
Appreciate it.
You are welcome.
Any other questions for Dan? Thank you, Dan. Thank you to Mike. Appreciate you taking our direction and clarifying it for us. Managers' report.
Thank you, President Ballerine. I have two items I'd like to report on this evening. The first item, while it was noted at the last board meeting that the village ended the fiscal year in a surplus, I did not get the opportunity to thank village staff, department heads. It was a collective effort in which we derived a surplus of $596,503 in the general fund, that is, to the good in a very challenging year where a lot of other communities didn't see that type of surplus, and some of them may have been operating in the red. We also presented to the board for 2021 a balanced budget, and we are right on target with regard to that. So I wanted to share that with the village board and also thank village staff for all of their efforts. On another topic of thanking village staff, I received in the mail, as the board members and members of the public know, the village is a member of a risk management pool called Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency, and they do recognize villages and departments for their efforts in managing risk throughout a given year. I'm happy to report in 2020, the Village of Riverside, for the following departments, experienced zero accidents. This includes for workers' comp and auto in the fire, police, and parks and recreation departments. So just to kind of put this in perspective, we're one of 71 members. And of those 71 members, 19 received this plaque. And of those 19, only five, which include us, had two or more departments listed. So this is a huge accomplishment for village staff, so I did want to recognize that. If the board recalls, we have a $50,000 deductible. So anytime we can have a year of zero incidents, which is somewhat unprecedented, especially in public safety due to the inherent risk, it's a great accomplishment, and so I want to thank village staff for that. And that is all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Manager Francis, and thank you, staff. Next, resident comments for non-agenda items. Do we have anybody that'd like to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Petrazelka, and I'm here representing the Frederick Law Olmsted Society of Riverside. I'm here to share some current Floss initiatives and projects that the village government might find of interest, and possibly to help promote. As always, we are trying to engage our local community and the wider Olmsted world, especially in regards to the Olmsted 200 Birthday Celebration occurring next year. Our walking tours have kicked off to a successful start this year. We didn't do any special advertising. They're coming to us. They want to tour Riverside. We've had over three dozen folks signed up so far, and we've also been contacted by the Platinum Adventures Tours of Wind Trust Bank for a special tour in September. So we're getting into the big leagues with that. Last tour, we had a group from Texas here. They didn't want to leave. The tours are normally two hours. Two and a half hours went by, three hours, it was longer than that. They wanted to see everything. Lot of interest. As always, we encourage our visitors to patronize our local dining venues, and I think that's helped a little. Our next regular tour is July 25 of the North Division. Our landscape workdays are in full swing. This volunteer work in partnership with the village is essential to maintaining our beautiful village and its landscape. The next one is scheduled for July 31 at the Long Common. A new initiative is the Seed Project, in partnership with a new Riverside business. We have now organized seed collection events in Riverside, and these are to be used in the design of Olmsted 200 museum-quality botanical boxes, some incorporating the Riverside plan. The largest of these will be donated to the library, and the others to be sold as keepsakes and gifts. Our next new initiative is the Tributes and Trees Program, which allows people to thank, memorialize, recognize, or congratulate others for any notable event with a donation of any amount, the money to be used in consultation with the village forester to maintain and beautify the Riverside landscape. Floss is also working to design solicit funding, solicit funding for and oversee the planting of and properly maintain the Olmsted Overlook, a public nature space adjacent to the Swan Pond Park, that will incorporate Olmsted's philosophy, which has since been scientifically validated, by the way, that immersion in nature and green spaces promotes overall health and well-being. Finally, probably wondering what this is. Can tell Mr. Olmsted carries a lot of weight around the country. Good for a workaholic. I'm sure you've all probably read most of this, right? It's only about 600 pages. But Riverside has a prominent place in this book. It's plans and views of communities and private estates, okay? And Riverside is the very first community designed by Riverside. And our own Connie Guardi gave them a lot of material to work with, okay? Including many historical photos. I won't go through all of them, but it's really well-done. Our library has a copy, as does our historical museum. Ours was the first Olmsted community designed by Olmsted. There are 10 in all. The last one is a place out, well, it's a suburb of Atlanta, Georgia, called Druid Hills. We have been contacted by and have established a dialogue with the folks in this community, and in our discussions have jointly concluded that it would be mutually beneficial to develop a closer relationship so that we may jointly promote our communities and their many charms. We believe the other Olmsted communities would feel the same. As part of this endeavor, we in Floss have jointly prepared a proclamation of our mutual bond. We, I'm not going to read it. We have shared this proclamation with the village staff. It has a lot of wheres in it, which we thought would be fun. We would welcome the village board's perusal of this proposed proclamation for its possible inclusion on the village website. I have no idea if that's something that you would consider or not. We're going to put it on our website as a first statement of our platonic solidarity with the other Olmsted communities. Are there any questions or comments? I've taken up a lot of your time, I know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have one question, or two questions, actually.
Yes.
If someone wanted to purchase that book, is it available in?
Yes, it is. It's not cheap.
It doesn't look?
Unless you're worried about, you know, the gross, but in fact, the cover, the actual cover of the book is.
Wow.
So it's chock-full. I mean, I have delved into it. I have not read it all either, but it's full of interesting things, and it weighs a lot.
And my second, my second question is, how did the people from Texas find out about the tour?
They go on, it's on the internet. They go searching, okay? And they're looking for, there are a lot of communities that were not designed by Frederick Law Olmsted himself, but by his sons around the country. And they are very proud of that fact. It was the Olmsted firm at that point, after Olmsted retired. And I believe they were interested in something in Texas, okay? And I think they wanted to know more about Olmsted areas and where he did his work, and that's what led them to Riverside. And we get, you know, we get people from all over the world, okay, that come here to see Riverside. I had a group from the Philippines that came through, and they had some, you know, early teens with them, okay, younger, younger kids, and they were fascinated with our squirrels and our rabbits. They did not have them in the Philippines. I said, "Well, what do you have?" They said, "We have rats." However, just as a bonus, as I was taking them around by the scout cabin, there was a herd of deer. So I thought I was going to lose those kids. They ran right into the woods after the deer, and we had to hunt them down. But it was probably one of the highlights of their life, I thought. So anyway, yeah, that's the kind of things that can happen in Riverside. Or the residents come out when they see a tour. We had one in the first tour around the Babson Estate, and a fellow was watering his lawn next door. He said, "Oh, you're here, you're here for the tour." I said, "Yeah." "Well, you want to come see my backyard?" "Sure." They were excited, okay? So I mean, that's the kind of, that's how Riverside people, okay? They're proud of their town and proud of their properties, so.
Thank you, Mr. Petrazelka. And thank you for everything that the Olmsted Society does.
Okay.
And we'll look forward to getting a copy of that proclamation. Is there any other residents for non-agenda items? Okay, so we will move on to the consent agenda. With the board's permission, I would like to move the following items from two business, from new business, items 10A through 10G, which are special event applications, to the consent agenda. Does anybody have any? Okay. So, consent agenda. Ratified voucher list of bills, July 1, 2021. Approved the voucher list of bills, July 15, 2021. Approved the Village Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes, July, June 17, 2021. Review and file Landscape Advisory Commission meeting minutes, May 11, 2021. Remove and review and file fire, police, and public work department, June monthly reports. Motion to approve a special application for the rescheduling of the Friends of the Riverside Kayak Event with paddle-on outfitters to be held on Sunday, July 18, this Sunday. And then, a motion to approve a special events application for Ravinia to be held in Guthrie Park on August 13, 2021. A motion to approve a special events application for Cory's Kids Triathlon to be held at the Riverside Swim Club and on the First Division Roads on August 14, 2021. A motion to approve a special events application for Curbside Cuisine Events to be held in Centennial Plaza on August 14 and October 13, 2021. A motion to approve a special events application for Movie in the Park to be held in Big Ballpark on August 27, 2021. A motion to approve a special events application for Touch a Truck to be held on Pine Avenue on September 16, 2021. A motion to approve a special events application for the RBHS Bulldog Invite Cross Country Meet to be held at Indian Gardens on September 18, 2021. And a motion to approve a special event application for Picnic Like It's 1869 to be held on the Swan Pond Bluff on September 19, 2021. Is there anything on this list that any of the board trustees would like to have removed?
Not removed, but I would like to comment that the weather does look very good for river conditions this weekend for kayaking, as well as the discus grows rigada that's been moved over to Saturday as well. So this would be a very good weekend for everything.
Good. And if I can have a motion in a second, please?
I'll make that motion as well.
Motion by Trustee Gallagos, second.
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Marsh Oska. Clerk Haley, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Oska.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Since we have Ron here, and most of these special events were from the rec department, is there, you want to give us some highlights or little tidbits that could?
Absolutely. Most of these are events that we have done in the past, but just to provide a little detail quickly, Ravinia Concert in the Park will feature the music of Nick Ponorelli. We're also partnering with WSSRA on that event. They will have their members and they will have a presence at that, at that event. Cory's Triathlon is an annual event generously sponsored by the Cory Sikich Foundation. We work with John Sikich specifically, honoring Cory and promoting wellness and positive body image. Also, special thanks to the swim club for letting us use their facility for that event. Movie in the Park is generously sponsored by State Representative Mike Zaleski. It usually is every year, and we're going to do something different this year. We are going to put up a few choices on our social media, and we're going to have the residents choose the movie for that night. And of course, the Touch a Truck event is not only cool for the kids, cool for adults, you get to interface with not only the vehicles, but a lot of village departments and a lot of village employees find out what those vehicles are used for and the equipment is used for, and also village staff is certainly accessible for questions and details about the machines.
Are you going to put on Chairperson Maloney's hat and tell us about Party Like It's 1869?
Not, not for this week here, no.
I'm sorry that she's not here to, to give us an update. She's had a death in her family, and we give her our thoughts. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Board and commission reports, is there any trustees that would like to speak to this? And now, discussion of the Groveland flood wall design and where we are currently. Manager Francis?
Thank you, President Ballerine. This is just a follow-up to Preservation Commission's discussion. So if we look, do a look back, in December of 2020, the board had decided at that point in time to move forward with the design phase, and at that point in time, the direction was to, for Doug Gotham, who's a landscape architect in which the village has worked with before, to work in coordination with Berg Engineering to create some renderings. And at that point in time, those renderings were provided to the board. President Sells, in March of 2021, had outlined them for the village board, and they were passed on to the Preservation Commission, who then provided their feedback in April. It was consolidated, and then the memorandum was finalized at the preservation meeting in June. And so it's incorporated into this document. At this point in time, obviously, we still have to go through the State Historic Preservation Office. There's still design and review that needs to be done, but based on the very prelim high-level feedback that we've received from Preservation, which will obviously continue once we start the Section 106 review, is that this seems to be headed more in a positive direction in taking the input of the Preservation Commission. Ultimately, depending on the feedback of the State Historic Preservation Office and in coordination with Preservation Commission, it will be up to whether or not this is considered a betterment and will be incorporated as part of the project, or if the village will have to pay those costs. Once again, this is very preliminary, and so to state one way or another how this will go is unknown to me at this point in time. But we did want to give an update. Trustee Marsh Oska had mentioned it in her report, and so I wanted to make sure that the board had received it and received the feedback. I do want to also thank all the Preservation Commissioners, of which Trustee Marsh Oska was one of them, who provided a lot of feedback. Pictures to be incorporated into the memorandum. Our new LAC Commissioner, Commissioner Coombs, also provided a significant amount of feedback and historical lookback on the different timeline of Preservation feedback, which was then incorporated. And the other commissioners, including Commissioner Kaplan and also Chairperson Piple, who was kind enough to provide us time, do a couple of Zoom meetings to ensure that the fourth rendering would start to really incorporate that feedback that we were looking for from the Preservation Commission. So this item is for discussion only. If the board has any additional feedback, there is nothing else that I have to report at this point in time as it relates from Army Corps of Engineers, but as we get updates, I will continue to provide it to the board. But now you have, what is the fourth rendering that we have, that has been designed by Doug Gotham?
Any questions? Any questions? Trustee Hannan?
So what's in, on, I think, Slide 100 is the, sort of what, where Preservation came out on being consistent with their concerns?
The fourth one, it starts to incorporate, so you'll even notice, the memorandum was drafted and it was put in a draft format. And so we provided that to Mr. Gotham as part of that feedback, and then worked with Commissioner Kaplan, access the co-chair, or not the co-chair, I'm sorry, the vice chair of Preservation, even though it's not required in addition to Chairperson Pipel. And so as part of those discussions, this is the concept that was crafted. And so there hasn't been a final decision. I think it's very difficult to have a final decision by Preservation until we actually do the Section 106 review. But this incorporates the feedback that we've received. It's in alignment.
That, that, I'm very happy with the collaboration and that Preservation was able to give us, you know, thoughts and positive suggestions. And quite frankly, this picture is much more impressive than where we started. So I really enjoy that this is a collaborative process with a lot of people coming in. One question, and obviously not to be answered tonight, you know, the look on the riverside obviously is more involved with the plantings and the extra brick. Would love at some point for somebody to have an assessment of, after a river event, what's the anticipated maintenance to get that back to its usable state?
I will work on that with our village engineer.
Thank you, Trustee Hannan. Anybody else?
When do you think is the, I mean, isn't the next step, when is the Army Corps going to come out and actually survey the, so we know where this is going to be and the height and all the questions?
I haven't received a definitive date about the additional surveying. They're backlog on some of their projects, and so that dictates when their surveyors are available. So once I have that information, I will definitely report back. The goal is to minimize disruption to those residents over on West Avenue as much as possible. And so the conversation that I've had with the Army Corps of Engineers is, when they go out to do the supplemental surveying, that they would also put up the line essentially to show approximate elevations of what the wall would be on those different properties, so that they're going out, they're doing their surveying, and they're also opening up the line.
When that is done, if you wouldn't mind shooting us an email so we can all run over there and take a look at it?
Absolutely. And I will also make sure Preservation has it, and we'll also post it online, because I think there's general interest by the public.
Thank you.
I just have a question for clarification as well, that process of the surveying is a precursor to the 106 process, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to pending business. Again, we're going to be discussing the ordinance for the registration inspection of rental properties within the Village of Riverside. We're not going to take any action tonight. The last time we were here, we heard from a lot of residents, and of course, if any residents would like to speak tonight, we'd more than be happy to listen to them. I would also, last time, we did not discuss from a board standpoint, because we had quite a few different emails that I wanted, you know, I wanted everyone to read and, and give us, you know, to have the people that wrote those at least know that we listened to them. So do you want to start with the residents, or do you want to start with the trustees? Okay? Anyone, residents would like to speak? Okay? Then I will open it up to the trustees. Sure? Please.
As I understand it, you know, this revision, I think, addressed a lot of the concerns raised by the board and a lot of the concerns raised by residents. My understanding, and I guess this is a question for Village Manager Francis, for a single-family home, the inspection cost is $115, and the multifamily would be $55. And that's anticipated to be paid to be just the triennial inspection cost. So that breaks down for the rental units, multifamily rental units, to roughly $18 a year. So if that's correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that's helpful. The one question, two questions I had, we have in here. When we talk about the inspections, we also mentioned the three-year, three inspection zones, and then the additional 10% of rental dwelling units will be inspected. I didn't, I just didn't understand that section. It's.
What page are you on?
I'm on page 119, page six of the ordinance, under G2D Romanet 2. Page 119 of the package.
Okay, I may print out, it starts on 118.
The line with the big question mark next to it.
I believe this item was an oversight based on previous discussion by the village board. And I, we can ask Attorney Molina, but I believe the intent was just to do the triennial and not to do any more of the random inspections.
And that was my question.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great.
And then, one quest, other follow-up question we have in here. Paragraph six on page 120.
What page of the ordinance?
Page seven of the ordinance.
Seven of the ordinance, sorry.
We talk about administrative search warrants, and just, I mean, when I read that, immediately leapt to, you know, what alternatives do we have short of getting a search warrant?
Could issue a notice of violation in local ordinance court?
So it would go through an administrative adjudication process, where we give them the notice and to comply, and then you do a follow-up notice before an administrative hearing officer, similar to what we do for code enforcement issues.
And that would result, that's a fine-only process, so you would hope to gain entry by the threat of a potential fine, whereas an administrative warrant is, would be issued by a court and would be subject to potential contempt if it were disobeyed.
Yeah. And I guess that's my prefer, I mean, anytime I see a search warrant, it just, it really needs to reflect, you know, what is the objective here? The objective here is public safety. And I think going the alternative route with a monetary fine, that's not de minimis, but enough, as you say, Attorney Molina, to financially incentivize people to comply is the better route.
Correct. Well, and that would be, no doubt, the initial stage. It's, the ordinance doesn't direct staff to take this as a first step, but it's in here so that if there were a life safety issue potentially, this remedy could be there to address it. But I think that the usual course is to use the least intrusive means of obtaining compliance, I mean, almost at every step of the way.
What is considered a life safety?
Well, it would, it would depend. I mean, it would depend on the people responsible for that. Chief Buckley, for instance, if he had concerns about something where we had possibility of carbon monoxide issues or whatever, something like that.
Fire alarm.
Yeah. And also, it would depend on whether it was a standalone building, or whether there were neighboring, you know, apartments right next to each other, and what the nature of it was. But it would be a case-by-case. It wouldn't be defined in here.
But to me, this is on a non-emergency basis, because you still need to apply to a court to get the warrant. So taking emergencies out of the agenda.
Well, okay.
I mean, this is not, there's a carbon monoxide leak, we're pounding on somebody's door.
No, that's right.
We're not going to go get a search warrant and then three days later force them to open the premises. That's not what we're talking about.
No, that's right. I would say it would be an extremely rare situation where this would be where staff would direct, direct the matter to go, starting in court with an administrative warrant. It would probably be first, simply a letter saying, please be advised that at your triennial inspection, no one was available, or the inspector was refused entry, realize this is required every three years, please make a call, so we don't have to follow up. And then, if you still don't get an inspection, you write another letter basically saying, we could be forced to issue a notice of violation, you'd be advised that this is a violation of the village code not to allow it, but we don't want to have to do that, so please call to make an appointment, that kind of thing. I mean, that's my guess, is it would be done in a, like, kind of the way the village operates right now, really.
Correct. We go, the goal of the administrative adjudication process is to get compliance ultimately. And even if the person is unable to attend, if they contact us and ask for additional time to comply, the hearing officer will then continue the matter. Usually, in most scenarios, we do get compliance even before it goes to the administrative adjudication process. But probably the best example of life safety, because I'm thinking of a couple of situations, would be where a fire alarm is having an issue, because we've had situations in the past where we wouldn't go for an administrative search warrant, but, you know, where we would take them through the adjudication process, and then ultimately, if necessary, to court if it raised that level.
Yes, ma'am, please. Sure. If you wouldn't, please come to the.
My name is Connie Claver. I own an apartment building over at 119 Forest State Avenue on the corner. I don't really understand all of this, of why you are now trying to do this, and you're saying safety of the, why only the apartment buildings? I mean, everybody in this whole village owns a house. There's houses that are probably not safe. I have only 10 apartments. You can come there right now, check any one of them, and they're perfect. That's how I rent them. That's how I want to keep them. I have a yearly inspection of my furnace. I have a fire alarm system directed right into your station, your fire station. I have all of those things. What makes my building unsafe, that people would have to bother my tenants to come in there and then charge me? I'm not asking you to do that. You're, but you want to do that, and now you want to charge me? I don't understand it. I didn't even understand a lot of the things that people were saying here tonight, that were saying, this is a lovely town, and you're doing all these events. There are serious things here in this town. That water, the river, we've been wanting something there to prevent. I, my husband bought this building in 1997. We have had four floods in our building. Four. The first one, we didn't even know that we had to, we were in a flood zone, and everything that was ruined, we had to repair ourselves. I, I just need to, I guess, somebody to make me understand something better. I just, I don't understand that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other comments? Yes, Trustee Evans?
Well, I'm comfortable with the draft, with the recent changes and with Ed's remarks. This isn't about what's most convenient or economical to people. We're a community that values safe housing for renters, and the final draft should illustrate a commitment to safe tenant housing. Tenants comprise up to 17% of village residents. And we've made a number of revisions to the original ordinance to reflect landlord feedback, including lowering the number of inspections so that doesn't, that it doesn't interfere with the rental processes. So I'm comfortable with what we've done, and I think that we've done it in a manner that acknowledges some of the issues that the landlords struggled with, and it also provides some empowerment to the tenants.
Anyone else? Well, I.
I actually feel that in certain ways that this is. A little overkill. I recognize and completely see your point, Kristin, that we need to be cognizant of the safety of our tenants, those who rent rather than own their homes. But I'm wondering if maybe the ordinance is a little, you know, overly broad in that regard. I mean, for, you know, for owner-occupied rental units for premises like that, where there's an on-site owner of the building there, I think, you know, there's more of a stake, as some of the landlords, you know, articulated at our last meeting. There's more of an investment in maintaining that property and being accountable there. So maybe that owner occupation is an issue that we could look at. Maybe, you know, the size of the units. I don't know where to draw the line. I don't know where the best point to draw the line is right now, but my instinct is that we're trying to do too much with this particular draft.
Thank you.
I'd like to share, I have similar concerns as Trustee Marsh Ozga. I'm concerned with regard to the scope of the drafted ordinance. It seems a bit overbroad to me. I'm a little concerned that with regard to the multifamily units, that cost is per unit and is likely, costs that landlords incur are often pushed down to the tenants over time. And so I think that's an impact we may not be fully considering. I'm also a little concerned that we may be underestimating, because of the proposed scope, the amount of work that will be required by the village and our ability to staff that and to stay current with that, and make sure that we're not interfering with our landlord's right to do business in the village. So I would be in favor of exploring some reasonable limitations on the ordinance, whether that would, to Trustee Marsh Ozga's point, consider restricting or opting out those who have owner-occupied, or considering something that would apply to a four-flat and above, or perhaps trying to tailor this more closely to our goals and to the risks that we're trying to cure for.
So I think those.
I don't know. Too much overstepping our bounds as far as a village government's concern. I mean, really, tenants can communicate with us if they have an issue with us. If they don't want us in their units, they have a right to have their own privacy as well. I kind of think it's overstepping a little bit. I mean, I understand the need for safety in the common areas, but if landlords are getting their units, their buildings inspected, we could require that they file that inspection with the village on a certain, you know, a certain basis that, you know, it's done, they want it done for their own properties, and then we could require it that way. But this might be a lot for staff to take on, a lot for our village to take on as an overall process.
Thank you. Trustee Hannan?
Well, and I appreciate the comments from Trustee Marsh Ozga and Trustee Clarity, you know, in that this discussion started before they joined the board. But just by way of background, you know, the objective here is, you know, health and safety of rental properties, of people who occupy rental properties. And, you know, I think it's a well-made point on owner-occupied. I think that's something to explore, needed to explore the definition of owner-occupied. But, you know, my main concern is, we have a number of houses that are being serially rented, where they're not owner-occupied. They're owned as rental property, and nobody knows what conditions they're in. We don't have professional landlords, like the woman who got up and spoke, who knows what they need to do to stay within code, to protect their residents. This is somebody who bought a property, couldn't sell. This is somebody who bought a property, couldn't sell it, throws it up for rent, ends up renting it. We have no idea if there's fire alarms, we have no idea if there's a gas leak, we have no idea if there's non-compliant safety issues. And we debated, how frequently do we come in and inspect these units? And, you know, came upon, well, it's not going to be every turnover, it's not going to be every year. Once every three years seems like a reasonable approach to address this safety concern. And, you know, when we first introduced the ordinance, you know, cost was an issue. We're down to $18 per year per unit. I mean, even if that gets passed along, it's $18 a year. I can't see that being a reason to not be against this. But I think we have addressed the, is this overkill? You know, my view is, if somebody chooses to rent, you know, coming in and having an inspection, if it's wildly compliant, it's a very unintrusive process. Very concerned about the single-family homes. If we have a problem situation, you know, this is intended to address that on a village-wide basis, so it's not a tenant versus landlord, it's village versus unsafe property, which I think we, as a village board, have an interest in preserving that we have rental properties that are safe for anyone who chooses to live in the village.
Do we have any data to suggest or information from which we can form the opinion that the single-family properties are unsafe? I mean, we have a lot of single-family properties in the village, and I'm concerned about the health and safety of our tenants in the same way that I'm concerned about the health and safety of our property owners. And we're not asking to inspect our property owners' properties on any kind of regular basis other than upon transfer.
Well, going to Trustee Osga's, they're owner occupied, so we assume that owners are going to take care of themselves. These are people who are coming in and renting the home. The owner has no skin in the game to keep it compliant, has a certain number of fire alarms, certain number of ingress and egress to get out safely in case of emergency. That's the main concern. Nobody knows the answer of what are rental properties, what do they look like?
I understand the point. I disagree slightly that there's no skin in the game, and I think there are a lot of property owners of a single-family property that have put it up for rent that do care about, I think there are negligent owners that rent, and there are negligent owners that don't rent right in. So I'm having a hard time drawing the connection between a property that's a rental property being more likely to be unsafe.
Okay, thank you. Village manager?
Thank you. If I may, with regard to tenants, so when we started discussing this particular ordinance, I think from a staff perspective, unfortunately, some of the analytics that we've kind of captured over time, it's not great because we started utilizing a work order system only recently, and some of them are generally, our previous inspector, how it was generally put in the system is code enforcement items. So trying to drill down as to the nuances of whether or not it's a single family, if it's a rental property. So some of that information, we just don't have. But what I do want to share with the board is, when staff started looking at this particular type of ordinance, it was really in the back of our minds of, tenants, call us. And they want the village to do something. And staff really feels as though there's nothing that we can do if a tenant isn't allowing us to gain access to their unit. And some tenants don't allow it. They'll call, they'll notify, whether it's myself or other village staff members, about the issue, and then we'll say, okay, we're going to send somebody out. And they'll be like, no, I'm sorry, I just wanted you to know about the issue. And so there's really nothing else that we can do. And so from staff perspective, this is just another tool that we can use to try to be proactive, to help those renters, because they feel as though the village isn't doing anything to advocate on their behalf. And so that's a really challenging situation that myself and other staff members find themselves in, so I just kind of wanted to give a little bit of that background.
And have we considered, I respect the idea that it's a tool, and that does make sense to me, and I do understand that tenants do call, and some tenants may feel intimidated. Have we considered using some more communication, some more outreach to our tenants? I know we've talked about different ways the village can communicate and improving that, and doing more outreach to tenants so that tenants, when they're, you know, a resident in our village, understand what we can and cannot do, and how we can protect them, how we can keep them safe. I just, it seems to me, once an ordinance is on the books, ordinances don't come off the books very often. And perhaps an intermediate step would be to try to get at this a slightly different way with more communication, a little more outreach, you know, a Riverside welcoming committee to residents, that sort of thing may be less burdensome to experiment with.
Trustee Evans?
Yeah, I mean, I think that we did get a lot of resident calls. They knew who to call, over the winter especially, they knew to call the village. We absolutely should do more outreach to tenants to make sure they understand their rights, but also to engage them in our community notification so that they're fully informed of what's happening in the community. But I definitely feel that it's important that we have these tools. I don't think we're asking a lot with just 20% of the units in each building being inspected every three years. We've cut down, cut a lot of the work out of the ordinance, you know, and I think it's manageable, and it serves the tenants.
If I would.
President Bell, if I can just make one more point.
One thing I also want to focus on is if we can step away from the inspections. Paragraph three, which in my mind really dives to health and safety, and I'd really hate to have this be the baby that gets thrown out with the back of the water. We're going to have a registration, page three of the ordinance. Address of the dwelling unit, number of separate dwelling units, with the number of units currently occupied, full name, address, and telephone number, working email address of every owner, contact information of the representative, service address, 24-hour emergency contact, and for that, there's a $10 registration fee. You know, I remember there's been some incidences where there's an emergency at the building and nobody can, the village can't reach anybody. And to me, I don't see that as being overly intrusive. I think that's fundamental safety and protection, that if the village needs to get in to stop a, get to a shut-off fail, get to a carbon monoxide leak, we call and can't reach anybody, that, you know, that's not the owners here, they answer their phones. It's, you know, we have to protect, you know, we need to be able to do that. We need to understand who is the steward for these people who are renting these properties.
I'm in support of that. I have no objection to some sort of opportunity for the village to improve upon the data we're able to collect on how many units we have, communication with owners. That seems very well tailored to me, to our goals.
Right. Then that is, that is some of the supplemental information based on the April 1st, 2021, is that that's a $6,200 annual cost. And knowing who is in our apartments, knowing the tenants, and having that information, I think, is invaluable.
Sorry, are we talking about tenants or owner? We're collecting owner information.
Well, I'm also talking about tenants. We have the village annual cost to collect individual tenant information. Those annual costs would be approximately $6,200. Registration would be processed through the village financial software, which is designed to utilize with a fee, with a fee, it's about $10. I think it's important for us, from basically what you just said, is for us to best communicate with our residents, rental residents, is to know who they are.
But if we had the information of the owners, we would have the information on what, with precision, which properties in our community are rental properties, we would be able to target those with mailings. I have some privacy concerns about asking people to register with the village when they move into the village as individuals, but if you're a landlord, you're likely to be a property owner, that seems a little bit more reasonable to me.
Okay. Does any, do we have any idea, how many, what, do we know our violations that we have? It just seems like some of this, and I agree with a lot of things people said, but it seems like we're, we got a broad brush here, and I'd like to fine-tune the brush. Where are our violations? I mean, I think what we all agree on is this ordinance needs to be a life safety ordinance, not only for the residents, but also for village staff. When our police and our fire get called to a, to a building that is multiple stories high, and they have to go into the third or fourth floor, there's a railing, I want to make sure that that railing doesn't collapse when my fireman pulls out, you know, a stretcher or leans against the thing. I think that is very, very important. Now, how do we accomplish these things and also be respectful of renters? I was a renter, I don't know if I'd let you in my apartment. You know, it's my apartment. But, you know, that's me. You know, I'd like to know how many, you know, where are our violations? Are they in the single-family homes? Are they in the two, you know, the two flats, the three flats, the six flats, the 10 flats and above? Where are our problems? And then when we know where our problems are, we can target the ordinance to address the problems that we have. We already, my understanding, go into, and I don't know if Director Tad can answer this because you are part of fire, we do have fire inspections already that go into these units, correct?
Annually in the common areas.
Annually in the common areas. If we were able to pony on the annual fire inspection, a building inspection, so we send out our building inspector with our fire inspector, maybe we do, maybe it's not annually, maybe for units to, you know, from one to three, it's, you know, every other year or whatever, but we get into, if we can get into the common areas of these buildings with both police or with both fire and buildings, I believe we would catch a majority of the life safety issues that we're dealing with. We're trying to make sure that the halls are well-lit, that there's working fire alarms, that there's fire extinguishers, that there's proper signing for coming in and egressing or whatever, that the railings can hold up to 500 PSI, because that's what standards are. We would be able to do that without going into a residence apartments. And, I mean, we get residents that call us and complain, and then we say, well, we'll be out there in a minute, and they say, well, you can't come in my apartment.
Not always.
Well, but if they want us into their apartment, they will let us into their apartment, and then we can take accurate steps. If they won't let us into our apartment, I mean, we're here to help. We want to be, you know, we want to be there, but on the other hand, a resident, a renter has got skin in the game also. And if they got unsafe conditions, they need to tell the village that they have unsafe conditions, and the village can then contact the owner, make sure that that's taken care of, they can go to that, we'll be out tomorrow, we'll be out today. And I think most issues will be picked up by inspection of the common areas.
And I guess my concern is what's left out, and it's because of the commonality of the apartments and people living so close together. You have a problem in one apartment, the person lets you in. Oh, this is something coming from the adjoining unit, we can't go in and investigate. Then what's the answer?
Well, I think if you are allowed in one apartment and you can take a trail to another apartment, then you have the right to get into that second apartment. But we could do it through the courts, we can do it, I mean, if it's a life safety, then you have a.
Just to figure out what's going on, if there's a smell, if there's a drip, if there's a water molding that's coming across. That's, I mean, are we going to go to court to get a search warrant in that situation?
How would you get into that apartment now? Just happen to be one of the.
With this ordinance, in the triennial.
Only 10% get to be, how are you going to, how do you know that one of, that that apartment is going to be part of that 10%?
Well, we're, I think it's a minimum, we're checking them on a every-three-year basis is better than nothing. So what you're suggesting is you would want us to have, what, an annual inspection go in, unit to unit?
No. What I'm proposing is that we piggyback our building inspector to our fire inspector, and we get them to, both of those, both of those, both of those individuals will inspect the common areas of the building, the stairways, the hallways, the railings, that type of thing.
Don't we do that now?
No.
No, not the building inspector. Only fire inspections are done annually on all multifamily buildings, regardless of rental or condo units, if they have three units or more, it's based on NFPA standards.
So my thought would be, we piggyback the building inspector to that. And if we can get into the common areas, I think our goal of providing life safety for not only the renter, but also for our first responders, is accomplished. If there's a problem within an apartment, that we are here to help those renters. They need to call, and they also need to allow us to gain access. If there's multiple unit issues, then we have to take the proper course to make sure that we get ahold of that landlord and that is rectified, and we have the adjudication system to do that. Yes, ma'am?
When we, when the court allowed us to go into the buildings, every unit in one of the buildings over the winter, they, we were, we received a very long list of issues in every single apartment. So I don't think that sending the building inspector to the common areas is going to catch as much as we needed to.
It may not catch everything, but it may balance, you know, our staffing, our ability to improve upon current standards, but not be overly burdensome. It just may be a compromise. We certainly can't find everything.
I don't see it as a compromise, because I see that we're looking at general spaces in a building where you can't tell if the gas is hooked up properly, or, you know, you might not be, might not notice a rodent problem in the hallways. What are the, what are the, what are the common spaces, the hallways and the entryway?
We could make the common areas, I mean, could we say mechanicals, basement? I mean, could we describe common areas?
Yeah.
That would allow us to get in and make sure that there is, you know, the furnace is properly hooked up in working order, that the wiring is, you know.
Right. Yeah, you could say, if, common areas are typically where anyone can go, but to the extent you're talking about areas that are not residential areas where mechanical systems are, we can include those in the inspection area as part of it. Yes.
I have a question. One of our residents, who's a landlord, wrote in a while ago suggesting we look at Oak Park's ordinance as a model. And under Oak Park's system, they have a annual, not an annual, they have different classes of licenses that are given to landlords, and they have different tiers based on how many violations the particular landlord has had. So, for example, if you've got, you know, an excellent record of new property violations, for example, you could have a license that's three years long, that, you know, then becomes an inspection and renewal thing upon the renewal of that license. If you have, if you're at a different level, your inspection is more frequent, like, you know, every two years, and it goes down to six months. Some people only have, some landlords only are given six-month provisional licenses, which are then, there's an inspection requirement upon the renewal of that kind of license. Did this board ever, well, not this board, because I wasn't part of that, but did the previous board ever look at anything like that? Are there reasons why we couldn't consider doing something like that?
Of a tiered approach, I think, so, no, we didn't discuss, I don't want to speak for the other board members that were previous on the board, but from my recollection, no, we really didn't discuss creating different tiers. I'll turn to Attorney Melina with regard to what we can do, because Oak Park is a home role community versus non-home role, but then also looking at the perspective of how do we manage it from the six months to the different levels of making sure that our software can allow us to kind of manage. to the different levels of making sure that our software can allow us to kind of manage those different properties based on good property owners versus those that are having some challenges with their properties. And so that's kind of where we ended up with the triennial of looking at our financial software and also our building software of what it would allow and how we could set it up to make sure that we were monitoring everything and including, making sure that we wouldn't overlook any type of inspection and things of that sort. So if we are looking in that direction of changing it to be more of a tiered approach, if we can, then the other piece would be we may have to evaluate a different type of software to accomplish that.
We can use-
Well, the other, the, the one other thing I think is that the, the tiered approach, I think, in a, in a certain way, does manifest itself in the current draft, because I think the Oak Park ordinance was looked at. But you have to sort of realize that if you're going to do inspections at all, you know, you could always just do registration, no inspections. But if you're going to do inspections, going wider, much more than three years is, it's kind of, would be odd, because that's a long time to go without an inspection if you're bothering to do the inspections. And so what the, what the draft, what the board got to was Oak Park, I think the maximum space is three years-
Three years, that's correct.
And that's where this is.
Yeah.
It was as least intensive on everybody as possible.
But it could be more intrusive, I guess, as you would say, if it's warranted. If it's warranted, if the violations are there and you have, you know, properties that are repeat offenders, their term for, or their conditions of the renewal of their license, you know, is a function of how well they perform on their inspections.
Right. And I think it was a complexity issue.
But if we, if we tie our building and fire together, we would then do inspections of three flats and above every year. So I-
That's true. I, I just, I was asking the question as to, you know-
Let's just say we have a landlord that has an issue. You know, we would then write violations against that issue, you know, that landlord, and then they would have to have a subsequent inspection, which would then have another, I would assume, would have another charge. So it, and plus the charge of the violation. So you can, you can bring, you know, as best you can, our landlords into compliance, the ones that have the problems, and the ones that don't have problems, they're getting, they're being no more, no more than they're already doing now. That's, that's, that's right. And I could be wrong. I, I still wonder why we wouldn't want the information of the residents, why that's an invasion of privacy. I mean, it, I mean, I mean, if you, if you own, you, I, I don't understand that. But I can, I, I'm open to hearing it.
Well, if we just, before we move on to that, one of the concerns that I raised when this concept first came up is the number of single-family homes that are being rented. And we have no idea how many of those in the village are being rented, what condition they're in, what safety issues there are. What's a common area of a single-family home? And how, under your proposal, do we check the health and safety issues of those single-family homes?
I don't have that answer. Right now, we don't do, we don't do inspections-
Right. But that's addressed in what we have here.
Yeah. You, you wouldn't do inspections because there really wouldn't be any common areas.
Right. That's my point.
Right. We don't inspect them now. Is, do we have a history of violations in single-family homes?
They're not inspected.
Well, we, if somebody's living in there and there's a problem, we would get a phone call. We would have violations. I mean, I, I, I would, I would think we can look at our, our adjudication court and find out if that's warranted. I don't know if it is. Could be.
We do, so with regard to single-family homes, we have had some instances in the past for rentals. Usually though, it's report, whether it's seen by a village staff member or reported by a neighbor, and then it's usually on the exterior. It's a rare occasion when we actually make entry into a single-family home because of a code enforcement concern.
Do we have reason to believe we have more code enforcement concerns with the single-family homes that are rental properties as a percentage compared to those that are owner-occupied and not rentals? I'm, I'm just failing to make the connection why we, the single-family homes are more likely to be a concern because, by the virtue that they're rented.
They've chosen to put their building out for use by others, by people who don't own the house. And so I think we have a duty to protect those people. I mean, I'm, I'm not going to propose something, we're going to, on a triennial basis, inspect every home, if that's what you're suggesting.
I'm certainly not suggesting that. I'm just trying to understand the concern as it relates specifically to single-family homes. I don't-
Because we don't-
My personal opinion is I don't think that by virtue of renting out your property that you have, that we have any basis to believe that people are abdicating their responsibility or that it, there's an increased health and safety concern with those properties. But certainly if we have that data or had an ability to track that, I'd be open to hearing it.
I, I guess my question would be, how is it different than a three flat or a two flat? We used to have one extra unit. And, and again, I go back to, we have no idea which homes are being rented and which ones are not. And so we can't even assess where, where the potential issues are. And that's why I think we got to this once every three-year inspection process. You know, so there is a, someone looking at, as we talked about before, you know, is this stove open? Is there a working carbon monoxide area? Is there fire alarms that work? Is there ingress and egress to get out in the case of an emergency? I mean, that, that's, you know, you're, you own a house, you move out, you rent it. You're, you're not attuned to what you need to do to keep things safe for renters as these professional landlords are. That's my concern.
I have a question.
Yes, Trustee Evans.
So what would the building inspectors that followed along with the fire department see that the fire department wouldn't see if they're all going to the same space?
Well, I think a, a fire inspector would be more in tune to his area of expertise, and that's fire. So he would be looking for fire alarms, things like that. Where a building inspector would be looking more towards railings, stairway railings, hallways, paint on the interior, make sure the windows open, build more, again, building issues. I, I mean, I don't want to, but I would assume that they're, I, they're two different, two different functions. So these people have different, you know, different, they'll be looking at different things. I, I, I share your concern for single-family. I, 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 again, I think we're, we're painting single-family a broad brush. But, you know, we, you know, I don't know how we can, I mean, it just seems like we, how we can wrap around that. But again, I, I would look at the data and see where, where, where our enforcement problems are.
I mean, it only takes one fire where there's not adequate egress and degress, and that's something that could have been prevented.
Don't disagree. Yes, Mr. Yates, please.
I said I wasn't going to do this again, but I am, you know. Just a brief, a couple comments might help. My name is Dale Yates. I live on Groveland Avenue in Riverside, and I appeared here the last meeting. Basically, on the, the single-family dwelling rental units, one of the reasons you could check that if it's a renter or a homeowner is by the water bill. Because I rented both multifamily units, big multi, small multi, single-family units. And a landlord that has a single-family dwelling has got to pay the water bill. That's just the way it is. Most villages won't allow a renter to pay the bill. So that's one way you could check it is, you know, you use the water bill as, as a tool. I also agree with the trustee, Megan, about the penalizing single-family renters, owners that rent their properties. It's the same thing could go with single-family owners. Their property could be just as bad a condition as a rental unit. So I'm going to refresh again what I suggested before. I think getting back to the safety issue of it and the health issue of it and the, of a renter in a property, if, for the owner, if we paid a fee to the village as a business license, whatever you want to call it, and have, and self-certify those issues that you provide a list that you want answered about smoke alarms and all the other issues, be happy to do that. I mean, like the one lady you mentioned, you know, we were in a business to make people happy and retain people. We don't make any money when someone moves out. So we're in retaining people. Now, we also mentioned before, not to bring back old things, but the punitive end here of why we're doing this is because there are some maybe bad landlords. We had some issues with people calling the village about issues. That should be taken care of. We have an attorney to do that, and there's, there's ways to do that. There's also a whole list of laws on the books in Illinois about renters' rights and about what your rights are as, you know, to manage that. So I don't need to, you know, to school you on how to do this, but there are other ways to do this besides going and inspecting every two months or a year or every two years and bouncing back and having another layer of employees per se in the building department. So you're going to have to have someone do this. And I don't believe what you're charging right now is going to cover the program. That's just my, my take on it. I mean, what you're, what you're looking at, I mean, you know, we all know what salaries and costs and benefits and all the other things to go on in, in putting someone on the street. It takes money. Most villages today don't have a building department. They're subbing it out to an inspector, a contractor. He's licensed by the state. He provides a service. An incident in Brookfield, I'll tell you exactly what Brookfield does. They request that you let them look at this inspector report before they give you an occupancy permit. Pay yourself some money. So I'm saying, I don't, I don't think as owners of property that anyone is adverse to paying a fee for a business license to operate a business. Is that, it is a business. But I, I think going in into becoming, inspecting and putting our tenants at, you know, at somewhat, putting us, make us look bad. Why do you have to come in and look at my unit? What's wrong with it? Well, they have inspected because it's, everything's all right. So I, I'm just, I'm here like I'm saying, if there's any other questions you might want to answer, ask me. I'm happy to answer for you. But I mean, I think this could be handled a different way with a business license versus a fee license. And you put the number on it, whatever you think, and I think it would be reasonable to do that. And we'll self-certify those, each license stating of what you asked that them to, us, ask us to do. I mean, if you want us to inspect their smoke alarms and so forth, that's all in our lease. Most leases have that provision in it. Smoke alarms, carbon monoxide, you know, inspection for railings and stuff like that. I understand your concern about that. But I mean, like I say, I think it's pretty punitive. And I think there's another way to handle it. And I can say, I think business license is the way to go. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Yates. Now, just to clarify that, our fire and, our fire only goes to units four and above, correct?
Three.
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 Okay. So that's what I would recommend we tend in the building. For the same with the fire. The self-certifying for single-family and duplexes, we give them a list of what needs to be done?
Under penalties of perjury.
Sure. If we can do it. I mean, if, I, I, I mean, if the, if a landlord is signing off saying, I, I have, you know, working smoke detectors, working carbon monoxide detectors, the date that the last, the date that the furnace has been inspected, and, and, you know, we can come up with a list of things and we self-certify single-family and duplexes or three flats.
Are you asking? That can be done.
I am asking that.
Yeah, that could be done that way. In fact, it was being done that way in some communities during the pandemic when inspectors weren't going into places. It was doing, as part of even building permit inspections, they would have the contractor take a video and submit it. So, but there's a way to do that, to have the, have each renewal of the registration be requiring a form to be filled out, and you create a list, and, you know, working this, working that, there, and then you sign it. And by signing it, you're certifying, you know, that you're, that it's correct to the best of your ability. And it would be a code violation if it were found that that was not accurate information at a subsequent time. That could be done.
What I would suggest is if we are going to go the self-certification route, that it's signed by a principal of the owner, that it's signed under penalties of perjury. And if this is the route we want to go down, I would urge every owner to consult the personal liability exposure they'd be subject to if they signed as a principal of the owner and filed the false statement on safety issues. But if that's what they want, I think that helps solve the problem, because the owners would have, the owner principals would have real skin in the game then.
I definitely am in agreement with that point. I would also ask if we could explore the idea of having, you know, a tiered licensure system that is based on, you know, self-certification may be available to people that have had, to landlords that have had no violations in the past, you know, year or two, for example. But self-certification would not be available. An inspection would be required if there has been a history of violations. I'd like to look at that.
Anything else?
I have one more thing to say.
Please.
I, I keep hearing the word penalizing and punitive, and I just, just, I'm not coming from a place of wanting to penalize anybody. This, to me, is about providing safe housing for renters who are among the most vulnerable residents in our community. So, and I, I think that's something that we can, we can ensure together. Nobody's being punished.
So I don't know if we've, we've got some other, we've got some other options. We have the, the, basically what we have written. And then we, we also have units, single-family to, three flats that we, it's up to two flats. When do we send, when do we start with the fire inspection?
Three.
Three units.
Okay. So then we, so at three flats, we, we tag on building inspectors. And I, you know, finance-wise, that's, that's, you know, you'd have to figure out what it, what's the, what's the cost to do something like that. And I don't want to, I don't think I want to spend a lot of Lance and Michael's times putting this together, but if we could kind of get a synopsis of where we came from-
So what I, what I would suggest is that before any changes or drafting of any ordinance language starts, that the board, you find out where a majority of the board is and develop what I would call a term sheet. Because that's a good, so the, you know, you, we can, we can break each of these things out. One is, do you want additional ordinance at all? Find out where everyone is. Two, probably the, the gateway entrance to this is registration, right? That's the least that you probably could do if you do change the ordinance. Who's in favor of having registration? We really need to call it registration, in my opinion, because there is an issue, a home rule issue, non-home rule issue with respect to a licensure, which creates some challenges with tiers. But if we tie it to inspections, we could look at that. But you, so do we want registration? Where is the board on any regular inspections of private areas? I mean, is that, you know, is there any interest in that? Because if not, then those sections can just be taken out. If there is some interest in it, what, under what circumstances? And then sort of that way, go by category by category. And then once, once we have that information on where a majority of the board is on each of those, then I, we can develop a draft in an efficient- develop a draft in an efficient and I hope not too costly way through the village.
Just to piggyback on what Attorney Molina stated, because I've heard President Ballerine and others mention renters. Currently, as how the ordinance is drafted, obviously subject to modification based on the guidance of the village board, is it just indicates property owner in that contact information.
Correct.
It does not have anything as it relates, the original ordinance that was previously presented had certain information as it related to renters. That was then removed from the ordinance. And so now, as it currently stands, so if this board wants to make that modification or incorporate both property owner contact information in addition to obtaining those that are renting and their contact information, we would also need to incorporate or adjust what we currently have. So I just wanted to put that on the board's radar as well.
Okay.
If I may.
Go ahead, please.
I really like the idea of putting that sort of laundry list together. You know, very, you know, we went from several meetings ago to having somewhat consensus on the inspections to now everything's back on the table. I'd like to get a vote on where we're going rather than just some ad hoc feeling of what people thought and operate as a board with a vote rather than.
Well, then the nice thing about that is, you know, and once it's in ordinance form, things can get missed, right? Because there's a lot of filler language to cover certain legal requirements, and you want to be able to see the basic terms of what's this ordinance going to do. And then we put it in an ordinance form. And somebody's got to read it carefully too, but, but it'd be, you know, it's good not to have to hunt and search, oh, is my idea in there? Is, you know, this way we know it's there.
So I, I think the step we should take next is, if we can just take a minute and if you, if we want to get, put down a checklist and, and kind of get that, and, and people could then bring that back. I mean, and one is not doing anything at all. So that would be our first option. We just scrap everything and life is, life is back to normal.
Rather than do this on the fly, might I suggest that Village Manager Francis consult with Attorney Molina and put together sort of a checklist of what's in the ordinance, what was discussed at this meeting, so we have it and we can think about it and reflect upon it, and then come very prepared for next meeting to discuss those issues. And if there's anything on that list that people think should be added, they can email the village manager and get that on the list.
Okay. That's, that's a good idea.
If I may, if we could just make sure that at least we have consensus of the board that they would like to see some iteration of what's been discussed so that we're not necessarily spinning our wheels and then we come back and.
I think we all agree that we want to do something.
Okay.
Do.
I think we all, I think we all agree that we want to have our, we want to have the name, address and contact information of our property owners, renters, property owners.
Yes.
The second question is, do we want to, of our renters? I think we have.
You don't have to go through the list, President Ballerine. Yes, I just wanted to make sure that, yes.
Okay. So we can, we can get that and come back, and that'll be great.
Thank you.
Great conversation. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for your input. Thank you for your letters. Thank you, Mr. Yates, for your input. I appreciate it. Call me Okay, where are we? B, an ordinance authorizing certain fee waivers for new businesses. Manager Francis.
Thank you, President Ballerine. So if you recall, we have discussed previ, or rather, the board has discussed previously with regard to waivers. Currently, we offer the waivers for the outside cafes and the liquor licenses for certain classifications of the liquor license. Incorporated in the ordinance as outlined includes waivers for new businesses that come to the Village of Riverside beginning, so it would be retroactively to July 1st, 2021, through July 1st, 2022. And these waivers would include business license fees, the health inspection fees, the fire inspection fees, and outdoor cafe licenses. There's the detail in the data as it relates to the potential costs of waiving those fees and the revenue that would need to be derived by the new businesses. Is there any questions that the board has that I may be able to answer? I also want to thank Trustee Evans, because this actually came from a discussion that her and I had, and she got the wheels turning in my brain as it relates to what could we do for new businesses. And actually, Clerk Haley pointed out that, you know, while some of these fees are small, they're really significant for our new businesses. So I wanted to thank you for them and their dialogue.
Thank you. Trustee Hannah?
Yeah. Two, two points. First of all, this is just a one-time waiver for the 2021 fiscal year.
So it would, it would also have an overlay into 2022. So it would be a full 12 months.
Yeah, so the, the, the July to June 30 year, but not July 1st, 2022 and forward?
No.
Okay. That, that was, that was unclear to me in section two. If, if the.
I did have to reread that when I, when Attorney Morris forwarded it to me, but it says located outside the village's various businesses for applications received between July 1st, 2021.
Right, but if the application received, that triggers the waiver. So the question is, when is the waiver applicable? It doesn't address that.
Well, if it were received on July 1st, 2022, so.
No, I, I put my license in, say, July 31st of 2021. Does that mean all business license fees, health inspection fees, outdoor cafe license fees for the next 40 years are waived?
For the next.
Well, it doesn't put a time period on when this waiver begins and ends. It's a one-time waiver?
Yes.
Okay. I think we need to clarify that. Because it's just triggered, you'd say who's eligible, but you don't clarify what they're eligible for.
Attorney Molina?
I don't, I don't read it like that being open-ended. I mean, if an application, by application, we mean for, for these inspections, if someone's opening a new business, it would be for a specific business at a specific location. And if that application was received in this time period, you would get a waiver. If they opened a new business later.
An existing business in 2023. This says my fees are waived.
Okay.
It says if I put the application in, these fees are waived.
Okay. Yeah, we can clarify that it's only the initial.
Yeah.
The initial ones.
And then in the analysis, we had a break even of, of, you know, projected sales to recoup the waiver. Is there, I didn't see anything like that in the ordinance, and just wanted to understand, you know, I know that's a tall order to base this on projections, but just wanted to understand the rationale for leaving that out.
The data analysis, because we don't, we don't know if they're going to request a Class E liquor license. So we don't know what type of business that will be coming in, whether it will be something that will be retail-driven or a restaurant. And I couldn't tell you if they're going to be in a business district on Harlem Avenue or just within B1 or B2 districts.
Okay. So this is a one-time, one-year, come to Riverside, open up shop?
Correct.
Perfect. Okay. I like it.
Thank you.
Can I ask for a motion? In a second, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second.
I'll second.
Trustee Evans. Clerk Haley, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, was it Trustee Evans or Trustee?
It was, it was.
Trustee Clarity, okay.
It was a tie.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Trustee Hannah.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
And then just, just for the record, then what I'll be doing is, so that we don't have to bring it back before the board, we'll be adding the word initial prior to each of the Arabic numeraled fees that are highlighted. So it'll say, initial business license fees, initial health inspection fees, initial fire inspection fees, and initial outdoor cafe licenses.
Thank you.
Good?
Great. A resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract in the amount of 559 622 with ALAM Concrete Company for the Swan Pond Walking Path Restoration Project, the Swim Club Sidewalk, and the 2021 Sidewalk Replacement Program. Director Tab?
Thank you. On July 1st, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. in the morning, a public big opening was held at Public Works Facility. During the public bid opening, five bids were received, opened, and read aloud. Of the five bids, ALAM Concrete Contractors was the apparent low bidder with a price of $559,622. A low bid price includes costs associated with the following. The Swan Pond Walking Path Reconstruction Project at a cost of $426,337. The Swim Club Sidewalk, $22,995. And the 2021 Sidewalk Replacement Program at a cost of $110,290. The bid consists of multiple sidewalk projects that take advantage of volume pricing in the concrete. Christopher Burke Engineering has reviewed the bid documents and verified that ALAM Concrete Contractors Incorporated was indeed the low bidder. Christopher Burke Engineering has checked contract documents and recommends award of the Swan Pond Path Reconstruction Project, the Swim Club Sidewalk, and the Sidewalk Replacement Program to ALAM Concrete Contractors Incorporated. I do want to note, although the Swim Club Sidewalk was included in the Swan Pond bid, the Swim Club agreed to, at the board's request on September 3rd, 2020, to cover 100% of the cost of the sidewalk. That being said, because the sidewalk is located on public right-of-way, the village will provide the maintenance on the sidewalk once it is installed. Just to clarify that. Any questions?
Any questions?
So.
Go ahead.
Just so I'm clear, the, in looking at your budget to actual, we had budgeted this at $405,000, and it's coming in at, at 426, so pretty close in the ballpark?
Well, it was 405, and then when the, the limestone ledge rock was installed in the river access point, that was 130 on top of that 405. So it did, it came in actually well below where we thought it was gonna be.
Okay. So this, because I thought we had.
Well, we were around, well, we were around $600,000.
Okay.
This is included with that limestone ledge rock, that quote.
Got it. Okay. Perfect. That's helpful. Thank you.
Director Tab, I have one question. I don't know if you can answer this.
We'll try.
The sidewalk replacement program, construction is $110,000. Engineering is $10,000. The Swim Club Sidewalk, the construction is $23,000 with engineering of $6,500, $6,600. It just seems like that's, it, it just seems like for, for the percentage of the construction of that sidewalk, it just seems like the engineering for the Swim Club Sidewalk is three times higher.
Some of the costs with the Swim Club Sidewalk was, we received a set of what they were looking for, and then there was a turnover in engineering that they created an engineer drawing to submit to go out to bid.
So it was more detailed.
So there was more work involved on the front end of that project.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
I would like to know how we determine which sidewalks get replaced? Is there a list? I know that there's an understanding in the community that they call in their crooked sidewalk, sidewalk in the front, and it gets on a list. But what is the real process?
So there's 47 miles of sidewalk.
Uh huh.
So you can just imagine, a lot of it's bad. What we try to do is, so we, yes, we do get the calls, the one-off calls, and we try to initially see if we can repair it in-house. And if we cannot, it goes on a list that gets rolled into a program such as this. As far as the overall plan as to what we identify, we try to, in this particular situation, we try to incorporate it with another project in town. So this happens to be Swan Pond Project, a lot of sidewalks being installed. So we brought this to the Second Division. Now, we have a, an upcoming proposed sewer separation project, which we're gonna talk about later, in the onset gage area. Okay? So we want to try to not necessarily hit those roads, but we want to go outside of that, because we don't want to replace sidewalks and then have it ruined during the project. So proximity and working around another project so we don't get in the way.
And if I may, there's two other things that we do too, depending on the severity of the sidewalks where it's condition. It may be eligible for mudjacking or saw cutting, which is mudjacking where they poke some holes and it comes back up, or saw cutting is when they cut it to make sure that there's no trip hazards. Did I do that correct?
That is correct. Yes. A grind, not a mudjack. There are, there are other methods, depending on the severity of the sidewalk exactly. But this particular one, of course, we work within a budget that we're provided every year for the capital project, and this year is a lot of sidewalk replacements.
So do you just have a spreadsheet of addresses?
I have recently.
From people?
Yes, is the short answer. Yes, I do. And we try to work to the best of our ability, and of course, staying within our budget, to address those from the onset of repairing them in-house, of course. But ultimately, some of those are in condition that would warrant a full replacement.
Thank you.
Mike came over to our house a couple of years back and redid my, my couple of broken corners, so I appreciate that. And I noticed Trustee Foley is here. Cement, concrete just couldn't keep you away, could it?
I knew you were talking about someone, so I had.
I know. It is, you had to be here. Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Mike, can you have a motion in a second, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Trustee Gallegos, second.
I'll, I'll second.
Trustee Evans. Clerk Haley, please call the roll.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Trustee Hannah.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application for the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, Section 319, grant funds for the reconstruction of Parking Lot B with porous pavers. Director Johns?
Good evening. Before you tonight is a resolution supporting submitting of IEP A Section 319 grant for porous pavers at Parking Lot 8. If approved tonight, staff will work with engineering to submit this grant by July 31st and present it in the 2022 budget as grant contingent.
What is the ongoing conversation with First American Bank and the spots that they have been on?
Director Tab and I met with the property manager earlier this week. They went back to their staff and are going to be evaluating the number of spots that they feel they truly need. They felt originally in the conversation that possibly too many were allocated to them and their need was not that great.
Okay. Are we, are we going to be putting pavers on spots that we don't own? That's, I think, probably the question. Are we gonna, yes, we are.
We own all the spots. We have a long-term agreement with the bank that they get exclusive use of those spots.
Okay. Thank you.
But they may be willing to give some of those up.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that. I can ask for a motion, please?
Motion made.
Trustee Gallegos, in a second.
Second.
Trustee Marsh Ozga. Clerk Haley, if you please, call the roll.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Trustee Hannah.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Save the most fun for last. Discussion of our future capital funding for water and sewer funds. Director Johns?
Thank you for enjoying this as much as Director Tab and I do. Before you tonight is a 10-year future capital planning for water and sewer funds. This is a continuation of a discussion that started with the board February 18th, 2021. If I can direct everyone to Water and Sewer Infrastructure Improvement Plan A, this is the plan that was presented in February of this year. The first thing that I wanted to comment on was that it does include the water meter replacement program starting in 2021. That will have to be pushed to '22, but we do hope to come with recommendations still this year. The original direction staff received from the board was that they wanted to charge residents for the cost of those meters, as was done in previous years. Is that still the int- Is that still the intent of the board?
What are the costs of the meters?
A standard meter, about one fifty.
The meter and the, as I register, would be approximately two hundred and fifty, three hundred dollars.
Okay. You know, we've, this is, again, personally, we have been collecting thirty-dollar fees from residents now for, I believe, four years. It would surely be nice to give something back to the residents and not charge them for the meter, the new meters. Or, and are all meters created equally?
All meters are of different sizes, so the number of the two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars, that would be, you know, of course, it's a ballpark figure, five-eighths, three-quarters, one-inch. You start getting above one inch, inch and a half, two, three, four, with larger apartment buildings, schools, they go into the thousands.
Okay.
Multiple thousands.
My, my personal recommendation would be that we cover, we decide, every, and wait, I should ask you this question too. Does everybody play, pay the same infrastructure fee? So, schools, multifamily, okay. I find it troubling that I'm subsidizing a bigger meter, personally. So, my thought would be that the vast majority of the meters are going to be home meters there, so let's say three hundred dollars. We pay for those three hundred dollars, and any meter that is over three hundred dollars, they get a three hundred dollar credit and pay the balance.
That definitely could be done if the board elects to do so.
What's the estimated cost of that to the village?
About a million dollars?
Nine hundred thousand.
And where's that coming from?
It would come from infrastructure fees. I do want to say that the infrastructure fees have completed the Coonley, is that water?
Coonley Water Main Railroad Watershed.
So, the water, the water sewer fees, infrastructure fees have accomplished some important projects for the village since we started collecting them.
And if those fees weren't spent on three meters, would they be spent on these sewer separation projects?
They would be spent on other water and sewer infrastructure improvements, such as increasing the size of water meters or sewer separations.
I mean, in my mind, I'd rather do as much of the sewer separation we can to alleviate the flooding, rather than subsidize two hundred and fifty dollars. You know, I think the flooding is a big issue, as we heard this summer, and I'd hate to do anything that would delay that or otherwise, you know, not allow us to do what needs to be done to stop the flooding.
So, on that point, in two thousand twenty-five, I've got one of my glasses back on, two thousand twenty-five, we have the second largest sewer separation, that's the Olmsted Watershed, which encompasses like fifty-two acres. Okay? We are going to go for alternative bonds of five million dollars. With those alternative bonds, and we collect now an infrastructure fee of a half a million dollars a year, it looks like the Herbert or the watershed would be well within that five hundred thousand dollars or very close. Even if we did a million dollars, we would collect a million dollars in fees for two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five. With the alternative revenue bonds of five million, we'd have six million, and I can't add that fast, but it would look like we still would be able to do our second largest sewer separation project, and still give the meters to the residents. If I'm, if I'm doing my math correctly, I am not a financial wizard.
It would reduce the available fund balance to about one point four million in the water sewer fund. We run into a little bit of a problem with that scenario down in two thousand thirty-one. So, we'd have to adjust some of the end years of the plan if the board elected not to collect the fees for the water meter replacements.
Or, we could also adjust the infrastructure fee in small increments between now...
Correct.
So, we can add a dollar, dollar fifty, and attack it that way.
Could we get to a sewer separation sooner?
One of the main strategies in developing this plan was to keep a somewhat consistent level of debt service throughout the village. So, we are waiting until, as you, if you look at the bottom of the graph, a lot of our debt rolls off in two thousand twenty-three, then we have two years with low debt, and then we'd approximately equal that level of debt service again. So, that would mean somewhat relatively flat revenue collection and not a large increase of fees. So, if we were to move that up too much, we may have to adjust user fees either in water and sewer fees or the infrastructure fee to capture that.
I have a question. Does our infrastructure fee, has there been any adjustment for inflation, or is there any?
It's been thirty dollars since adopted.
And, and the proposed costs under Plan A and Plan B, are those taking into account adjustments for inflation in the future, or no, just a flat today estimate?
The expenses were given to us by the engineers, and there was some level of inflation based on the year the project was slotted.
Now, if...
Fees stays flat.
The fees, the infrastructure stays flat, sorry.
Why is that?
It doesn't have to. In the past, I had gotten the impression from the board that they had not wanted to raise the infrastructure fee, but if that's an option, that is something that we can do to either speed up projects or not. If you will notice, we did assume that the water and sewer operating will start contributing, I believe it's two point five percent more each year, starting in two thousand twenty-four. So, we'll have to make sure rates are adjusted to be able to give that additional contribution to capital.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I'm hearing lots of different things here, and I like a lot of what I'm hearing. I mean, I definitely appreciate the points that the separation of the water sewer system is critical for many of our residents who experience, you know, flooding and overflow during storm events, things like that. I think, you know, there's definitely a lot that we, as a village, could do to help that process along. I also like your point, but I'm not sure about the wisdom of, you know, giving everybody, you know, three hundred dollar credits for their water meters, but, you know, maybe we could do something that would enable incremental increases in the infrastructure fee over time so that we can eventually address some of these very important projects. But, you know, perhaps in the interest of equity and giving back to the residents in light of some of these fees that have been paid, take a look at offering rebates to people of a certain, like, low income or fixed income threshold that receive, you know, assistance from the state or benefits or things like that, because then we'd really be helping the residents who really, really need it. And so, as a matter of equity, we wouldn't be imposing a meter fee on these families or these households when really, you know, we, we have some money in this fund from these fees for potentially these purposes. But we could still then, with the incremental increases, be working towards the separation projects at a more aggressive rate and perhaps have a more of a realistic number to work with that may address inflation better, that may address future increases in construction costs, things of that nature.
And I like the idea that Trustee Marsh Ozga suggests that if we are going to waive any fees, we target it towards the seniors, we target it towards disabled veterans, we target it towards low-income people. I'm just, I went back through and read the staff report, and I'm not finding anything on a proposal to waive this fee. And I'm frustrated because this is the second or third meeting where we've had something come out of nowhere that's not in any of the prepared materials, not explicitly adjusted on the agenda. It would have been nice if this was going to be proposed, to have this in the materials so we can digest it, ask questions, ask questions to staff, ask questions to residents, and not be put on the spot to vote on something, you know, where we're just hearing it for the first time live at a meeting.
Okay, well, I have, I, I am no different than a trustee. If I want to, if I want to make a point as waiving fees, I'll make that point. I don't have to tell staff that I'm going to make that point. I've thought about this, and I make, it's part of a discussion, it's not...
Right, but the president sets the agenda, it'd be helpful for the rest of us, we had some heads up.
I agree.
Okay, well...
Well, we also don't have to vote on it today either.
Yeah, we, so the second, second thing I'd ask is, the sewer separation in the Olmsted project, when, you also have to tie this into the streets, also, because we have to...
Right, and that's one of the reasons we can't necessarily bump it up, is because we're funding the street resurfacing with MTT, not overall. So, in order to accumulate those funds, correct me if I'm wrong here, we do kind of have to wait for this window, you know, which would be the twenty-five, twenty-six window.
And how long would it take to actually do the engineering for something like this?
About a year. It's a large project, typically on projects like, like this. So, we're trying, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to coordinate sewer separation, water meter replacement, roadway resurfacing. We would probably reach out to some of the other utilities in the area, whether it's NICOR, make sure they don't want to do anything before we resurface the roadway, we don't want them tearing it up. So, having all that involved, along with the engineering, the preemptive televising leading up to engineering, because we want to know what sewers look like, so we have an accurate picture of when we separate, then we're doing the right thing. Some of our maps are from, you know, the thirties and fifties, not necessarily accurate. So, there's a lot of moving parks that have to go into a project like this, so a year to, a year and a half even?
We would also want to reach out to the residents on the impacted roads, in case they want to do any improvements on their residential lines, so that, that's the opportunity to do that at that point in time versus waiting till something breaks and then they have to cut into our nice new road.
I got to tell you, I still don't understand why water replacement fee, if I want to make a suggestion that I have to have...
I didn't say you had to.
No, just because I set the agenda, doesn't mean that I'm, you, I, I can't voice my opinion as we speak, just as you said, but you, you had other opinions about veterans and, and senior citizens, and Trustee Marsh Ozga talked about low income, that's all good discussion, and it all, discussion came out of something that I wanted to talk about.
It would be nice to have it on the agenda in advance, that's all.
This is my, this is the way I think. Okay, what else do you need from us, Karen?
So, based on the February meeting feedback, I also prepared Water and Sewer Infrastructure Improvement Plan B, which includes the Long Common Corridor sewer separation with the small vault in year two thousand thirty, which includes an additional alternative revenue bond issuance of six million dollars. As you'll notice, I have increased at that point the infrastructure fee by fifty percent to forty-five dollars bi-monthly to help offset those debt service payments, but that will not be enough in subsequent years if there want to be additional projects. So, I'm...
I'm sorry.
Looking to the board to give some direction, if they want to keep including the Long Common project on that, if they're comfortable with the size vault in proposed, if they are interested in the idea of a larger vault located probably under Big Ball Park, and if that decision may change if there's grant funding available. I apologize, I asked a lot of questions right in the row.
Okay, is there any questions? The four point two includes the vault as proposed?
Plan B includes the vault as, yes, as proposed, so the vault would be located under the triangle at...
Long Common Down. So, always a vault, it's an underground storage to retain stormwater until it, you know, slowly permeates around and allows, it takes it out of the storm sewer to provide a combined sewer, which is a temporary storage facility, and that's just one of the engineering methods to alleviate, you know, a flooding issue. But that's wrapped up into this Long Common option, and Karen's just highlighting the trajectory of the capital improvement plan by including that. Now, of course, she had mentioned the funding isn't necessarily adequate enough to, something we have to change to include that in year two thousand thirty.
Two thousand thirty is where the infrastructure fee does increase fifty percent, that is starting to get us there, that's a two hundred and fifty dollar, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase to cover six hundred and eighty thousand in debt service. So, there is a bit of a disconnect there for future years. If there's a project that we wanted to do in two thousand thirty-three or two thousand thirty-four, those may have to be postponed or look at adjusting fees. One comment that I received from, I believe, a couple of board members after they reviewed the packet was, what about incremental increases in the infrastructure fee, maybe raising it a dollar each year when we adjust the water rate for the muck rates? And that's definitely something that may get us there and a little bit more smoother for residents.
I'm definitely in favor of the incremental approach, and I definitely feel that in order to address some of our residents' concerns about their flooding and seepage, et cetera, that the prioritization of these projects is really important. So, I would be more inclined to go with something of the scope of Plan B versus Plan A, even if it did mean issuing additional alternative revenue bonds in two thousand thirty. But, you know, I think we need to take a closer look at exactly how much, you know, the inflation is going to be and make some better projections to determine what, what the appropriate incremental increases are. I think incremental increases are definitely going to be more easily able to be absorbed by our residents. I think the idea of the fifty percent increase, you know, from thirty to forty-five, you know, every two months, you know, in one year, is just going to hit people really hard. So, I'd prefer to avoid that.
And the other question is, do we want to maintain the vault that's proposed, or do you want to, do we want to look at a vault under Big Ball Park?
So, what was brought up through the discussions, current Long Common separation project includes the vault in the smaller island at Long Island Down. Through engineering, of course, that would have to be conducted, the thought was, and, you know, the funding element would change, of course, but do we want to maybe enlarge the scope of the project, which would then require, you know, of course, larger vault, the more water you can store, and the next closest spot would be Big Ball Park. You know, you can put a big vault in there, of course, and a whole lot of water, but then you're disrupting sports for probably a year, you know, so the softball literally might not be able to play there during that construction phase. Now, you incorporate, and Karen talked more so, but when you incorporate a park, you're eligible for different various grants that might be able to help fund something similar to that, so...
And the price would be considerably more than the vault that...
Absolutely, yeah, right. It would almost be a different discussion, because right now, we're trying to stack these projects as close as we can with the funding available, because not only the previous board, but I assume this board as well, would like to address the sewer issue. So, we're trying to stack these as close as we can... So we're trying to stack these as close as we can. Now, the way it's currently laid out, we'd have to tweak the, the funding element to get to that point in order to do that Long Common Project. If we were to re-engineer it to accommodate a larger vault, you're talking, you know, a lot more than what we currently see here. And it would have to be a different discussion on how that's funded, so.
I, I think what we're looking for from the board tonight is if we were able to get the grant funding so our out of pocket was similar to this, is that a discussion that the board would like to have? Are they interested in that larger vault opportunity, even though it may take Big Ballpark offline for a year, even though it, I don't know the other pluses and minuses of larger vaults, but is that something that the board is interested in?
I'd be interested in having that discussion. Is that what you're looking for? Is that helpful? If, if grant money is in play.
I want to know if you're not interested at all in the Big Ballpark, large vault, and then we won't look at those type of groups.
I, I think the feedback that I've gotten is do something about the flooding and do something about the sewer backup. So if taking Big Ballpark out for a year to create this vault that alleviates that problem on a permanent basis, I, I think a lot of people would understand why Little League had moved to a different field.
So I think your, the direction you've got tonight is to look into grant funding for Big Ballpark. If I'm correct, we want to gradually increase our infrastructure fee so we don't have a big hit in later years to fund some of these projects. I hate to bring it up again, but we, we just still have whether we want to charge for the meters or not. So I, I think that's the only place, so we either have the choice of charging for the meters, not charging for the meters, or doing a pseudo charge for the meters for low income senior citizens and/or disabled veterans.
Just a question, do, does the village have an opinion on our ability to administer that waiver at, you know, for a targeted population?
It would have to be a application process, so we'd have to set out the criteria and have the board approve what criteria qualified as low income or the age for senior citizens. And we do it as an application process, similar to what we did when we, the board decided to waive vehicle stickers for POWs.
So that's administratively feasible for you? It's not tremendously burdensome for the department?
It's unknown at this time because we don't know how much of a need, but it's a one-time process, unless we're saying, moving forward for anybody that is part of this change out program and then future programs. If we're doing it for the, the one-off for this, what, what we'll be seeing over the next couple of years with the change out, then it would just be for that little snippet in time.
So the Secretary of State has reduced driver's license fees for senior citizens who meet a certain income, you know, there are senior citizens who are incredibly well-off due to their fabulous investments, and then there are those who, you know, qualify for these reduced cost licenses. And that's the kind of the population that, you know, those in need are the ones that we need to, to really especially look out for.
So what we could do is we could create a policy specifically for this program based on the feedback, bring a draft at a future date to the village board if there, I'm seeing kind of a nodding of heads, and then have the board review it and then bring it back for them for final action based on the feedback from the initial discussion.
We have a consensus on that?
Yep, we do.
Okay, do you have everything you need from us?
Yes, just to reiterate, we are looking at Plan B as the, the final plan with graduated increases in water and sewer rates and infrastructure fees to be able to cover those additional funding sources. We will charge for the meter replacement for final approval with some sort of application or discount for low income. I got it all?
Thank you.
The other thing that, I don't want to throw this at you, that I, that I would like you all to consider, and I did send you the gutter removal. I think we should look seriously into during budget process to waive permit fees for permeable surfaces, for dry wells, for any type of water retention system that, that has, you know, green infrastructure on private property. Anything we can keep out of the sewers is, is a plus. I, I used, I got water in my basement. Knock on wood, this last one, I put in a permeable surface, took out a blacktop, put in a permeable surface area in the back, and where I used to get six inches of water standing in my backyard is, is gone, and I got no water in my basement. It was not inexpensive, but I think we should be encouraging people to do that. So that's something we can discuss at a later date. And I also gave you that, that, that separation from the sewers for the gutters. We have talked about that. We do not have an ordinance that says you have to do that. So I think that's something we want, want to think about, espe- especially in the areas that still have combined sewers. Now, that would not be, it would not be something that people in the first division would have to worry about because they are combined sewers right now. So they separated sewer, I'm sorry, they're separated. So it'd only be in the areas that still have. So whatever we can do to, to keep water out of the sewer system is going to help immensely.
Yeah, I think that fee waiver idea that you advanced was very good. I think it's worthwhile.
All right, so we move on. Yes.
What I would recommend for that is not a direct fee waiver, but the Water Sewer Fund subs, pay that back to the general fund for those fees because there are administrative fees, our administrative costs with producing those permits and reviewing those permits. So the Water and Sewer Fund would pay those fees to the general fund.
That's, that's interfinance. That's perfect. Thank you, thank you everybody for your input. I will not forget this time, trustee reports and communication. Would anybody like to report on anything?
I will.
Yes.
Okay, so as everyone knows, the year of COVID was not easy for many small businesses, and this would include those here in Riverside. The Chamber of Commerce is going to regroup and is coming up with new ideas, new plans to bring our, our downtown, you know, back together again with, with new events. This year, there could not be any cruise nights or car shows because there was not enough manpower, but those will be planned to be ranked in 2022. Holiday Stroll is also being discussed with different variants that could affect how that event will, will turn out, along with other things that are being planned. So there's regrouping, there's a lot of positivity happening. So be on the lookout for, for, for new things coming out that are good from the Chamber of Commerce and our business community. Also, keep in mind that September 23rd is the Person of the Year Dinner to honor Peter Pritzker Caucus, so save the date on that one. That's all I have for the night.
I would like to just, what was it, 16 months ago, we put signs in, some people put signs in the yard, we put signs, we're all in this together. And Riverside has proved that we are all in this together. I, I look at the, the, the COVID numbers by, by town weekly, and it, you know, it just, it's, blows me away that Riverside is over 90% at least, at least one vaccine and over 76% for, for both. That's amazing, and it's given us some comfort, and it's given us the ability to do things like we did last Friday at the 2nd of July and the parade. So we had a good time, and I appreciate everyone who, who has taken part in vaccine, and I wish the rest of the country would follow Riverside's example. With that.
I have some.
Yes, ma'am?
I have two acknowledgements.
Shoot.
I want to thank Friends of the Fourth, Parks and Rec, RPD, and RFD, and other staff who worked together to give us a very safe and happy July 4th weekend. And thanks also to the Floss Workday volunteers who were at Patriots Park on July 10th. They did a ton of work and the park looks really nice.
Thank you. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting at 9:20. We do not have.
Motion.
Oh, yes, can I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
It's not on my sheet.
I will second.
Thank you. Motion by trustee Gallego, second by.
It's my fourth meeting.
Trustee Marshauska. Village. Kathy, we please call the roll.
Trustee Gallego.
Aye.
Trustee Marshauska.
Aye.
Trustee Hanna.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.